I'd like to welcome you and call to order the Port Orchard City Council meeting for July 28th. And to pursue it to the governor's stay home and stay safe order tonight's meeting is coming to you via Zoom and we also have a call in number for those unable to utilize the Zoom technology. So that said, I would like to start with the pledge of allegiance. And so I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Those are the little mini flags that I think Beck bought for the parade and I still have mine. So a few years back, so we have a published agenda is are there many modifications to this evening's agenda? You're in council member Rosa Pepe.
Mayor, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Yeah, they motion by council member Rosa Pepe and I had a second by council member Luca rally for the approval as of the agenda as presented. Any discussion of this evening's agenda or agenda items for the and all in favor of approving the agenda? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda has been set. We are to citizen comments. I don't see any member of the public present at evening's meeting. We do have another citizen comment period at the end of the meeting. So I will close the first citizen comment period. The we are to our consent agenda. So what someone wishing to make a motion? Council member Clausen, are you waving or you want to make a motion?
No, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as published.
Second.
So a motion by council member Clausen, a second by council member Kuchardi, I believe. Does that I hear that correctly? Was that a yep, okay. And a further discussion of the consent agenda. Hearing none, all in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved. We are to our business items. So let me get to my agenda online here. The first is approval of amendment number one to contract number zero eight two dash nineteen with the Kitsap Public Facilities District for the South Kitsap Community Event Center, Mr. Bond.
Yes, thank you. Before the city council tonight is an amended agreement between the Kitsap Public Facilities District and the city of Port Orchard. And if you remember back to December 2019, we were awarded $12 million by the Public Facilities District for the construction of a community event center. And shortly after entering into that agreement, we did a request for qualifications to select an architect to do that work for us. And the next agenda item tonight is the contract with Rice Fergus Miller for the design of the South Kitsap Community Event Center. And through the selection process and negotiation of a contract, we realized that some changes were needed to the scope of work so that our consultant contract matched the interlocal agreement scope of work. And additionally, as the finance department was reviewing how to administer this large grant award, they realized they had a couple of needed changes to the contract language and specifically to get an initial payment by the Public Facilities District to the city so that we could cash flow this project and we wouldn't ever be waiting for reimbursements on their monthly meeting schedule. And it would just make things move more smoothly for the city. So the recommendation tonight is to authorize the mayor to execute an amended interlocal agreement with the Kitsap Public Facilities District.
Okay, and as background, last night, the Public Facilities District had a meeting. We myself, Nick Noah and Steve Rice and Lori Cook. Lori Cook and Steve Rice are from Rice Fergus Miller were all at the meeting and this amendment was passed unanimously by the Public Facilities District. So questions for me, Mr. Clausen?
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the mayor to execute an amended interlocal agreement with the Kitsap Public Facilities District as presented.
Okay. Motion by council member Clausen, a second by council member Deener. Any questions, me, Mr. Bond? Happy to answer them. Council member attorney.
Yeah, just a kind of two comments. First of all, within this proposal, the company I work for has been engaged to provide some ongoing support to this. And so I believe I should probably recuse myself from voting on this issue as I am a party to Columbia Hospitality, so I just wanted to make that announcement. And then second of all, I was speaking with council member Ashby earlier today and we just thought, you know, this is a pretty significant project and it might be a good idea for us to receive. Maybe you kind of put this as a standing agenda item at the Economic Development Committee where we can kind of get some periodic updates. And then obviously, when we have more significant updates, we could bring that to the full council work study. So just wanted to throw that out as well.
Absolutely, I hadn't even thought about what committee that we should be reporting our progress to. And that's, that's, I think, completely appropriate based on the economic lift and activities that this is going to create in our downtown. So unless there's anybody that disagrees, I think the economic. Excuse me for a moment there, some sirens. Economic Development Committee is probably the right place for the periodic updates. And of course, there'll be milestones along the way that where we're going to be reporting into the full council. So other questions of me and it was the, you know, the big deal was that the Public Facilities District amended this to front basically for cash flow purpose to 200,000 of the initial $400,000. This first 200,000 will get us roughly to the end of the year with a site selection and concepts. And then once we're comfortable with the concept and the site, then they proceed with the design activities, further design activities for the second 200,000. Council member Clausen?
Yeah, I guess I'm just curious since Sean brought that up. But how is Columbia Hospitality connected to this? Action, just out of curiosity.
You know, that's to my.
I can answer that too, if you, if you're so I they are a sub consultant to Rice Fergus Miller. Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Because there's a banquet facility aspect to this. Other questions? Okay, you'd be voting on the first approval of the first amendment to contractor, contract number zero eight two dash one nine with the Kitsap Public Facilities District for the South Kitsap Community Event Center. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the contract amendment has been approved. We're to our second order of business and I see Mr. Rice just joined us, welcome.
Rob, did you get my refusal from that vote just noted?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, as we have one, six yays, I didn't call that out, you're correct. No nays and one recusal.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for clarifying that. I got distracted by Mr. Rice. So adoption of a, the next item is adoption of a resolution approving a contract with Rice Fergus Miller for the South Kitsap Community Event Center, Mr. Bond, this is you again.
Yes, thank you. On February 26th and February 28th, the city's Department of Community Development published a request for qualifications for the South Kitsap Community Event Center. By the May eighth deadline, nine statements of qualification were received. On June 10th, 2020, after scoring and ranking the statements of qualification received and upon interviewing the top three qualified firms, the city's interview panel selected Rice Fergus Miller for the South Kitsap Community Event Center project. City staff then met with Rice Fergus Miller to discuss, clarify and develop the project understanding. In July 2020, the city received a schedule, scope of work and a draft contract for phase one of the South Kitsap Community Event Center facility, which was reviewed by the city council at the July 21st work study meeting. I want to point out that a couple of changes have been made to the contract since our work study meeting. After talking with the department heads, we talked to Steve Rice about the indemnification language in the contract and under section 12, they have reinserted our standard language, which includes defending the city and also removing the word negligent, which they had asked to have inserted. Also, along with that change is a new 13F and that is limiting some of the personal liability of Rice Fergus Miller's, its officers, directors, partners and principals, so that they don't have personal liability under the contract. And I think these, from the city staff's perspective, is an improvement to the contract and we recommend approval as presented.
Council member Luca rally.
I move to adopt a resolution approving a contract with Rice Fergus Miller for phase one of the South Kitsap Community Event Center project in an amount not to exceed $400,000 and documenting the professional services procurement procedures.
Second.
So a motion by council member Luca rally, a second by council member Clausen. Do you have any questions for myself, Mr. Bond? And I see Steve Rice has joined us, he can Beck, please ask your question.
Yes, um, this is kind of it, I don't want to say technical, but it wasn't until the earlier discussion from council member Shakar Kuchardi that I found out what CH was in exhibit B. And the fourth outline. Programming needs an assessment. It's conduct space and site programming, one of the bullets is with K R L for library. I would like Kitsap Regional Library spelled out. And the next bullet point says with C H for Advent Center. I had no idea what C H was and I found out it was Columbia Hospitality. I would like that spelled out also.
Is it good edits? Somebody capturing that?
Yeah, we will have RFM update their attachments for the contract before we sign.
Okay, and if you go on down the next one, it says identify other key stakeholders and it's got KB and COPO, which is Kitsap Bank and City of Port Orchard. And someone else looking at this general public is not going to know what those initials are.
Good catches. We'll amend those also.
Thank you.
We'll just consider those Scrivner's errors and I don't think they need an motion, do they Charlie? Okay, other corrections, questions? It's an exciting moment, cap, council member Kuchardi.
I was just going to repeat what I said on the last agenda item report that due to my employer being Columbia Hospitality, that is a party to this, that I will also recuse myself from this particular issue as well.
All right. Other questions, comments? All right, you guys are down to business tonight. I know we got a long agenda, we agree, everyone wants to get out to the sun. So you're voting on approval of a resolution approving a contract with Rice Fergus Miller for the South Kitsap Community Event Center. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And one recusal, so that passes six to none with one recusal. Thank you for joining us tonight, Mr. Rice. Have a good evening.
Very much, I look forward to everything. Take care.
You too. We're item C, adoption and ordinance authorizing an additional building inspector position. Mr. Bond, this is you again, three in a row.
Right. The current workload of the Department of Community Development has increased significantly with the increase in volume of active development and capital projects. DCD currently has one full time building inspector and is contracting out additional work that the city does not have capacity to serve in-house. The current building inspector is contemplating retirement in the near future. DCD would like to add a building inspector prior to the current building inspector's retirement date to provide some overlap and to allow cross training. It is important to the city to allow for the sharing of institutional knowledge for this critical role. The ordinance that is being presented tonight will create an additional one FTE building inspector position, bringing the count to two FTEs. This addition will be in place for the remainder of 2020 and the city is working through an organizational assessment and will evaluate the need for two FTE building inspectors going forward. However, the decision to have additional building inspectors will be a part of the 2021 and 2022 budget process. Staff recommends that the city council adopt an ordinance as presented to approve the additional addition of one additional FTE for a building inspector to the DCD. Thank you.
Council member Deener.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance approving an additional 1.0 FTE building inspector position for the Department of Community Development.
Second.
A motion by council member Deener, a second by council member Clausen. Questions for Mr. Bond or myself regarding this matter? Council member Deener?
Do we know how soon the retirement is and how much overlap we would get with that position? If in an ID situation?
John hasn't, John hasn't given us a firm date, but he has been for a number of months only able to work on light duty. Has some health restrictions and so he has only been doing plan review and will continue in that capacity. There's enough volume right now for one inspector doing plan review and one inspector doing field work. And we envision that at least through the end of the year. And then we'll evaluate this in the budget process, whether or not and through our organizational assessment, whether or not John is going to retire at some point, but he has not given us a date and he cannot complete all the duties of right now of his job.
Right, and just a clarification, John is doing limited inspections right now plus Skype inspections, but not anything that requires him to crawl or get into tight spaces. The other thing I was going to mention is that as a related note, I did take our finance director on a tour of development projects for about an hour today, showing him all that was happening. And his eyes were very big, seeing how much development is headed our way. And so he actually helped me prepare all the materials today, but he was very supportive of this.
So council member Deener?
I just would encourage us to get this underway as soon as possible, just because it could be difficult filling this position perhaps. So it might be worthwhile getting it underway.
Well, I hear the county's furloughing, so what's shouldn't have any problem at all. Ouch. Give us, can you even provide us a list of good names? Well, after that, are any other questions or comments? Serious comments besides my sidebars. With that, you'd be voting on the approval of an ordinance authorizing an additional building inspector. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the position has been approved. We are to item D, approval and ordinance approving a revision to the corporate boundary of the city of Port Orchard near the intersection of Anderson Hill Road and Old Clifton Road. Mr. Bond?
Thank you. This agenda item is to pass an ordinance annexing a small portion of right of way to facilitate the construction of the Old Clifton Road and Anderson Hill Roundabout. There is a special statute in state law that allows for the county and the city to agree to revise the corporate boundary of a city when you're, when you're taking in only right of way. We were able to get right of way dedications adjacent to the existing 60 foot corridor of Old Clifton Road to facilitate stormwater pond construction and the, the widening that is required for roundabout construction and the developer actually dedicated that to the county because it was going to be easier for us to follow this annexation procedure rather than doing a petition method or other method that has to go to a boundary review board and require a lengthier process. So this is a very straightforward way to ensure that the future roundabout project is 100% within the city limits and that is consistent with our previous agreements where the Bayside Plaid in Bremerton actually paid us mitigation funds to build this project in the future. And so this allows us to permit the project, inspect the project and bid the project without other agreements with Kitsap County. The recommendation is to approve an ordinance revising the corporate boundary of the city of Port Orchard near the intersection of Anderson Hill Road and Old Clifton Road.
Council member Deener?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance to revise the corporate boundary of the city of Port Orchard near the intersection of Anderson, Anderson Hill Road and Old Clifton Road.
I had a motion by council member Deener and a second by council member Rosa Pepe. Questions of Mr. Bond regarding this matter? Okay, hearing none, you'd be voting on the approval of the adoption of an ordinance approving a revision to the corporate boundary of the city of Port Orchard near the intersection of Anderson Hill Road and Old Clifton Road. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are at to item E, adoption of an ordinance ratifying use of video conferencing and telephonic meetings and amending Port Orchard Municipal Code, chapters 2.04.010, meeting place. Ms. Archer?
Mayor, council, thank you. This evening before you is an ordinance ratifying the council's use of video conferencing and telephonic meetings in place of our in-person meetings that are more traditional and amending the Port Orchard Municipal Code, chapter 2.04.010, which sets the meeting place for your meetings in order to allow for the continued use of telephonic and video conference meetings. As you know, and since we've discussed this at length, due to the governor's stay home order and all the subsequent related orders requiring or limiting the ability of folks to gather, the council was at a, it put in a difficult position because the Open Public Meetings Act requires that you gather and allow people to meet for your meetings. The city, like all agencies in the state, was forced to sort of choose between the Open Public Meetings Act its requirements and the governor's requirements. Thankfully, the governor took steps to modify the Open Public Meetings Act to allow for telephonic meetings and video conference meetings. But the city and as all agencies have, has established the location of its meetings in its code. This would allow us to ratify the council's use of telephonic and video conferencing in accordance with the governor's order and modify the code provisions setting the place to allow, setting the place for your meetings to allow for video conferencing and telephone when required by federal, state or local officials and permitted consistently with the Open Public Meetings Act. The current suspension of the in-person requirement for the Open Public Meetings Act ends August 1. So if that is not extended, then we would no longer be entitled to utilize exclusively telephonic or video conferencing meetings. This provision would only kick in when there is a requirement that you not meet in person and a suspension of the in-person requirement in the Open Public Meetings Act. I can't estimate what the legislature is going to do, but I imagine that in light of the pandemic, they will be revisiting that element of the OPMA cognizant of how successful telephonic and video conferencing meetings have been during this time. With that, I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Council member Clausen?
Yes, in reading the ordinance, everything is focused around the July 28th as being the end. As you indicated, if, if the governor were to extend it beyond August 1, then would we need to modify this once again?
No, so the ratification is focused on today's date because you're ratifying everything that's occurred prior to today. And then you're also amending your code, so prospectively from today forward or from five days from today forward, your meetings would be in compliance with your municipal code provision, which allows for you to hold video, would allow for you to hold video and telephonic.
Okay, I understand, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt.
Go ahead. I was just, I was gonna put some clarification too. If they don't extend, this will allow us to meet in this format, but myself and someone else will likely be in the council room for any of the members of the public. With the governor's order in place, we don't have to have a meeting place. But, but this new code would allow us if we didn't want to have the council in the chambers, but we needed to still comply with OPMA, we might need to open the council chambers for the public's benefit and put it on our new big screen that we're going to have installed here soon. So council member Clausen, you were going to make a motion?
Yes, I move to adopt an ordinance ratifying the city's use of video conferencing and telephonic meetings and amending Port Orchard Municipal Code, section 2.04.010 to allow this practice to continue where authorized by the Open Public Meetings Act.
Second.
Motion by council member Clausen, a second by council member Deener. Council member Kuchardi, do you have a question?
No, I was only going to make a motion so we could continue the discussion.
Okay, other questions of Charlie or myself? All right, with that, you'll be voting on the adoption of ordinance ratifying the use of video conferencing and telephonic meetings and amending Port Orchard Municipal Code related to our meeting place. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the ordinance has been approved. We're on to item F, adoption of an ordinance ratifying proclamation, ratifying proclamation and merchant order and emergency order, suspender, suspending Port Orchard Municipal Code, chapter 6.20 prohibiting single use plastic, plastic bags. Boy, I had trouble with that one.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, council members, before you this evening is an ordinance ratifying something that you've previously ratified, but that expired. The mayor's proclamation of local emergency and emergency order suspended Port Orchard Municipal Code, chapter 6.20, which prohibited the single use, prohibited the use of, it is a sentence, of single use plastic bags in certain circumstances. The mayor extended that proclamation due to the prolonged nature of the pandemic. And because he, absent council ratification, the mayor cannot alter municipal code. We must bring this back to you for your further ratification of the suspension of a provision in the municipal code. So this is exactly the same thing you did previously, simply ratifying the order suspending the prohibition on single use plastic bags during the pandemic. Because those, the use of bring, bring from home bags has been shown to spread the.
Council member Kuchardi?
I move to adopt an ordinance ratifying the mayor's emergency proclamation and temporary suspension of chapter 6.20 of the Port Orchard Municipal Code prohibiting single use plastic bags during the COVID-19 pandemic.
So a motion by council member Kuchardi, a second by council member Ashby. For clarification, Charlie, so will this then go away when the pandemic, just automatically with the pandemic? When the emergency orders are related to the pandemic goes away? Or we need to take action to reinstitute this?
If we, so your proclamation expires in 90 days. So if we have to extend beyond 90 days, then we'll bring this back again for application.
Okay, Groundhog Days. Council member Kuchardi?
So are we limited to that 90 days? Is that why the September 21st date is in there? Cause I'm just, you know, in reading this is it makes sense for us and maybe we can't do this all in this particular agenda item, but you know, obviously, when the state kicks in on January 1st, that's going to add additional complexity. Should we just allow us the opportunity for this to run for the rest of the calendar year? You know, these stores are going to have inventories of these plastic bags, giving them a runway to, you know, deplete them. Are we just creating more, more work and should we just let this go through December 31st? If it's possible to do it within this particular agenda item?
I believe that the council could, in section two of the ordinance, the second sentence of that section says for the time period stated in the proclamation, the provisions of chapter 6.20 PONCR suspended. The council at its pleasure could insert a different date there and say for the time period ending in, for the time period from present to, to an end date certain.
So was that an amendment I maybe heard from someone, council member Clausen?
Well, I was just curious that the purpose of this ordinance is to essentially ratify the emergency proclamation. And then if we were to extend this period through the end of the year, not that I'm opposed to it, it just seems like what happens when the proclamation goes away before the end of the year?
If that makes sense. Plastic bag then wouldn't then till the end of the year and what council member Kuchardi was speaking to, maybe we let this go for a period longer than COVID, which the way things are going, I don't know that the end of the year is, we're not going to be talking about this again.
Well, I understand, but we're tying this action to the proclamation. If we want to extend the, the elimination of this plastic bag or the extend the ability to use these three, single use plastic bags, should we not separate them from this proclamation?
The point is well taken. I do think the title stating that you're ratifying the. The point is well taken. I do think the title stating that you're ratifying the emergency proclamation's suspension does tie it to the emergency proclamation. We could take this back, this isn't time-sensitive, so I could take this back and modify it so that it's the council, because the council's purview is the code. So you could suspend Chapter 6.20 of your own accord for any period of time, particularly based on the emergency. So I would be happy to retinker the ordinance and bring it back at the next meeting.
That would.
Yeah, that was my, and that was my question. Could we even do it within this one agenda item because of those two kind of opposing forces there? Mayor, in my mind, you know, the reason why we would not extend it beyond December 31st is because of what the state is projected to do, and we couldn't preempt that at that point. We would be under the guise, I think, of what the, what the state's doing.
That's true. So maybe we just leave it alone with what we're doing, and if we have to touch this against September, we tackle it differently then versus bringing it back in another week or two weeks.
We're gonna have to touch it twice, either in two weeks or in September.
Yeah, I say just do it now through the end of the year. Let's just, we can table this and just do it, do it once.
Yes.
I agree.
Yes.
So there was a desire to table this then?
Yeah, the motion would be to postpone to the next meeting.
Yeah. Okay, and we would modify this and separate it?
Would we table this motion or just vote it down, and then you would bring forward a new ordinance at the next meeting that addresses it separate from the proclamation?
I think the latter is actually probably the best approach. So it would be to postpone discussion of the topic, or you could just let it die. You don't need to take any action on this ordinance. We could move to the next item, and then I could bring back a new ordinance based on the council's direction.
Do we have a motion, though, on the table?
We do.
So we would need to vote this motion down to make it go away. I mean.
Or move on and let it die.
Or it could be, it could be withdrawn as well.
I think it could be redrawn, but we can't just not act on a motion.
Correct. I apologize. Yes.
Who the motion maker was? Councilmember Carchetti?
Yes, so I would move to withdraw the motion on business item 7F.
And the second was Councilmember Ashby?
And I would concur with that.
The motion is withdrawn. No other motions going to be presented on this item. Am I good to move on? All right, we'll move on to G, Adoption of a Resolution Approving Amendment Number 3 to Contract Number 05418 with RH2 Engineering Inc. for 80%, the 80% Marina Pump Station Rebuild Project and Documenting Procurement Procedures. Mr. Dorsey?
Thank you, Your Honor, council members. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
On December 15th, and December 22nd, and December 29th of 2017, the city's Public Works Department published a request for qualifications for the 30%, 60%, and 100% ad-ready design for the Marina Pump Station Rebuild Project. By the January 12, 2018 deadline, five statement qualifications were received. On February 14, upon scoring and ranking of the SOQs received and upon interviews with the top two firms, the city selected RH2 Engineering for the project. Public Works staff then met with RH2 to discuss, clarify, and develop a project understanding. On July 17, 2018, the city received a defined scope, work budget, and project timeline for the 30% only and permit coordination phase of the project in an amount not to exceed $250,000. On July 22, 2019, Amendment Number 1 to the underlying agreement extended the expiration date to December 31, 2019, and then December 10, 2019, Amendment 2 extended the expiration date to March 31, 2020. That's when we were working with the downtown redeveloper and kind of slowing our process a bit. And on April 1, 2020, Amendment Number 2 extended the contract then to December 31, 2020. So Public Works staff and RH2 Engineering have now determined that moving to the 80% design and permit coordination is the best way to move forward with the project rather than going to the 60%. So staff recommends adoption of the resolution number 028-20, thereby approving the Third Amendment to Contract C054-18 with RH2 Engineering for the Marina Pump Station Rebuild Project, which is an 80% design and permit coordination phase in an amount not to exceed $750,000 in documenting the professional services procurement procedures. And basically, the, we went to the 30%, as you know, and we had a somewhat significant value engineering effort that, at the end of the 30%, we had a $15 million project on our hands. So we went through a VE process to get it back down to between seven and eight million, and now we're moving ahead to the 80% with that VE exercise behind us.
Councilmember Lucarelli?
I move to adopt Resolution Number 028-20, thereby approving Amendment Number 3 of Contract Number C054-18 with RH2 Engineering, Inc. for the Marina Pump Station Rebuild Project, 80% design and permit coordination in an amount not to exceed $750,000 and documenting the professional services procurement procedures.
Motion by Councilmember Lucarelli, a second by Councilmember Chang. Any questions of Mr. Dorsey on this matter? Hearing none, you'd be voting on the approval of a resolution approving Amendment Number 3 to Contract Number 054-18 with RH2 Engineering for the 80% Marina Pump Station Rebuild Project and Documenting Procurement Procedures. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We're to item H, Adoption of a Resolution Approving a Contract with Goldsmith Land Development Services, Inc. for the McCormick Ridge Dam Safety Upgrade Project. Mr. Dorsey?
Thank you. And just for clarification, items 7H and 7I are related, and so I'll just read into the record the summary that speaks to both, the same on both items, and then we'll get into the specifics of how these two projects are split up with the two different consultants. So in 2019, the city assumed ownership of the McCormick Ridge plat by annexation. As part of this annexation, the city assumed ownership of the McCormick Woods Ridge Dam, which is basically their stormwater treatment facility. It's just of a size that it falls under the dam criteria with the amount of impoundment. It's located in the northeast corner of the McCormick Ridge Development Phase 1. McCormick Ridge Dam is a large earthen impoundment created by the developer for stormwater management of plat. The dam was classified in December 2018 as a high-hazard dam by the Washington State Department Ecology Safety Program due to its proximity to high-density housing downstream of its northern embankment, basically all the housing in the city of Birmingham. As owner of the dam, the city is responsible for its operation and maintenance as well as maintaining all documentation associated with operations of a dam. Since the dam classification has changed, the city needs to update the engineering and geotechnical assessments as well, as well as update all dam safety documentation. So that's the, that's the preamble in common. On June 19, 2020, RCW 3904155, the city of Port Orchard's Public Works Department established a list of qualified contractors from the 2020 MRSD consultant roster. On July 10, 2020, Public Works selected three qualified bidders from this roster for scoring. Results of the scoring rank Goldsmith Land Development Services as the highest qualified firm to conduct the engineering services for the dam safety upgrade project. Goldsmith Land Development Services submitted a viable proposal and cost estimate of $43,681 to complete that project. Staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute Contract C064-20, allowing Goldsmith Land Development to conduct their assessment of the facility and generate the needed documents, designs, and renderings to update the dam safety documentation for the McCormick Ridge Dam.
Councilmember Rosa Pepe?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution thereby authorizing the mayor or designate to execute Contract Number 064-20 with Goldsmith Land Development Services Incorporated for the McCormick Ridge Dam Safety Upgrades Project.
Motion by Councilmember Rosa Pepe, a second by Councilmember Deener. Questions for Mr. Dorsey? I have one. Mr. Dorsey, is there any hydroelectric opportunities?
That would, that would be nice, but no.
Okay, so I'd ask. Revenue, you know. Councilmember Ashby, did you raise your hand?
This isn't associated with Anderson Creek at all, is it?
It is.
Is it?
Yeah, it ultimately discharges to Anderson Creek. And back when this was in the county, it discharged to Anderson Creek through a downstream drainage that didn't have houses in it. Subsequently, with Bayside Plat and another plat built in the city of Birmingham, it now goes through a number of people's houses and backyards before it gets to Anderson Creek.
Okay.
Other questions for Mr. Dorsey? You'd be voting on the adoption of a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute Contract Number 064-20 with Goldsmith Land Development Services for the McCormick Ridge Dam Safety Upgrades Project. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries to item I, Adoption Resolution Approving Contract with Tierra Associates for the Geotechnical Assessment of McCormick Ridge Dam Safety Upgrade Project. Mr. Dorsey?
Thank you. So the same preamble is in place. This is just for the geotechnical assessment for the dam safety, where we went through the same scoring process and selected Tierra, Tara, Tara, Tierra, Tierra's our right-of-way agent, Terra Associates, as the highest qualified firm to conduct the geotechnical assessments for the dam safety project for $5,900, and they'll be providing that information to Goldsmith. So staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution authorizing mayor to execute Contract C065-20, allowing Terra Associates to conduct their geotechnical assessments of the facility and generate the needed documentation reports to update the dam safety documentation for the McCormick Ridge Dam.
Councilmember Chang?
I move to adopt a resolution thereby authorizing the mayor or designate to execute Contract Number 065-20 with Terra Associates, Inc. for the McCormick Ridge Dam Safety Upgrades Project.
Motion by Councilmember Chang, a second by Councilmember Claussen. Are there any questions on this matter? Councilmember Rosa Pepe?
In the motion for consideration is there a need to put in not to exceed the contract estimate, or usually we have that in there in the motion? I was just curious.
I believe we've, that language is in the contract itself, but we removed it from our staff reports a couple, three months ago based on a request by council.
Legal counsel, and it has to do with change order authority, I believe.
It limits.
And it wasn't this legal counsel, it was more than a couple of months ago.
I may have missed it. My regrets. Thank you.
The language is not time interior, is not to exceed in the actual physical, or the the contract itself, but it was determined that it wasn't necessary to be in the actual recommendation. It limited staff.
Other questions? Okay, you'd be voting on the adoption of a resolution approving a contract with Terra Associates, Inc. for the geotechnical assessment of the McCormick Ridge Dam Safety Upgrade Project. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, the motion is approved. To our last item, and Clerk Renerson has taken the night off both times this newspaper item is being before us. And Janine, are you gonna take this or am I? I can if you're comfortable, if you don't want to.
I have no preference. It is completely up to you.
Okay, I think, I think this will be less controversial tonight. So you'll be, tonight is a resolution approving the award of the low bidder to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement for the city's official newspaper. And let me get to the staff report. And since approximately May 2020, the city's official newspaper, the Port Orchard Independent, has been exclusively publishing online. As a result, the newspaper does not meet the statutory requirements for a qualified newspaper under state law. In order to meet the state's statutory obligation, the city has also been publishing in the Kitsap Sun, a qualified paper of general circulation that is publishing both online and in print. RCW 35A 40.210 and 3523 3537 requires that each city with a population less than 20,000 to designate by resolution an official city newspaper and to select the paper via competitive bidding. The newspaper shall be of general circulation within the city or town and shall have a published regular, be published regularly at least once a week. On June 9, 2020, the item was brought before the city council for approval. During discussions, several council members voiced concern with awarding the low bidder to a newspaper that does not have qualifying circulation to our citizens and to redefine the scope of circulation. On June 23, council rejected all bids and directed the mayor to modify the RFP to focus on obtaining clear distribution numbers to ensure that the selected paper has enough circulation within the city to constitute general circulation per RCW 6516020. In addition, the city council temporarily appointed Kitsap Sun, a qualified newspaper of record, as the city's official newspaper. The city resolicited bids on July 8, 2020 for the city's official newspaper and closed the bid on July 23, 2020, based on the bids received. Kitsap Sun is the low bid. Recommendation is to move a resolution awarding the Kitsap Sun as the low bid based on a single line rate per day and authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with the Kitsap Sun as the city's official newspaper in a form acceptable to the city attorney.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution awarding Kitsap Sun as the low bid based on the single line rate per day and authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with Kitsap Sun as the city's official newspaper in a form acceptable to the city attorney.
So a motion by Councilmember Claussen, a second by Councilmember Deener, I believe. And any questions of me or Janine or the city attorney?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you for looking at this again. I think it's well worth it.
Yes, thank you.
I was just wondering, do you get a rebate from all the time that we've been already publishing with them?
We do not, but at least we will be publishing in two places any longer. And so with that, you'd be voting on the adoption of a resolution approving the award of the low bidder and authorize the mayor to execute an agreement for the city's official newspaper. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution is approved. We have no discussion items. We're to our committee reports. First is Finance Committee, and you are scheduled to meet August 11, 5:00 p.m. on Zoom. I don't think you've met since then.
Thank you for providing our report.
You're welcome. Reading off the agenda. And Economic Development Tourism, have you met? Councilmember Carchetti?
I got, we gave that report last week.
Perfect. Tough to remember them all. Utilities, have you met since last meeting? I see you're meeting next on August 18.
Yes, we had met. A couple of takeaways that I thought were especially interesting is discussion about fluoridation of the McCormick Woods water supply, once we get online with that. And the attorney let us know that we do not need a vote of the people to be able to fluoridate. So that was interesting and something I hadn't known. So we may make that connection without having an election on that. Another interesting take I thought was the option to levy excise tax on Weson, which we may do. So that may be something moving forward. Well, number 13, there was some findings that we may not need to treat for manganese. I'm not sure if that information has changed since our meeting, but should that move forward, that would be about a $300,000 savings to us. We have a little bit of a. We have a little bit of a problem with McCormick Woods Sewer Pump Station number one. Holding a performance bond on that because there's some movement in the connection point. And there had been some groundwater intrusion. The Marina Pump Station was also discussed, but we had that as an agenda item tonight. So our next meeting is August 18th at five o'clock through Zoom.
Sewer advisory, have you guys met?
No, that's in September.
Okay, and I see land use on the agenda for August 3rd. But I think that date is being changed. Councilor Diener, do you have an update on that?
Yeah, we're going to go with August 17th.
Okay. Janine will correct that.
What time on the 17th, Scott?
It's nine thirty in the morning.
We changed transportation to August 17th at nine thirty.
Do we have some crossover in attendance?
You. Oh, no, you don't. You're, yeah, you do. You're on transportation.
And Jay.
Let's go with August 24th, since that was the other alternative for land use.
Twenty.
Okay. So August 24th for land use to August 17th for transportation. Transportation was going to meet tonight, but Chris was on vacation. So it's been moved to the 17th of August.
Right, and we also had a conflict on that fourth Tuesday in August. So we had, we, that's why we chose to go with the 17th.
Perfect. Okay, lodging tax. I know I'm working on my side of that. I've got some calls out to for folks to serve on the committee. So Jay probably hasn't gotten very far on it because he doesn't know who his committee is yet.
That would be correct.
So Festival of Chimes and Lights, anything to report there?
Well, we are anticipating that we will not be able to meet at the beginning of December yet in the S crowds. So we're working on some virtual events. But in real life, we are still going to have the tree decorating contest. Perhaps the neighborhood contests for decorating. And the community decorating with sending photos to the city for various households. And we also think that we'll move forward with having a tree lighter, throwing the switch and trying to have the actual lighting of the tree show up on our virtual events zoom that we were going to try to have where we're going to have events throughout the day that are taking place on Zoom. It's a lot of unknown at this point, but we're pursuing this to have something.
There is a lot of unknown in the world, that's for certain.
Yes.
So outside agencies, I've got a couple. Do you have any back? It's usually you and I.
Yeah, and I haven't been attended any meetings since our last meeting. I do have meetings coming up this week, but nothing to report.
Okay. The Public Health Board, I met with Dr. Turner and Keith Gralner last week. We talked at length primarily about schools and you, I shared with you the letter that went out to the superintendents encouraging them for online education this fall. And we hope that they will make good decisions in regards to that. I think we're all aware of the governor's new restrictions he's imposed on bars and restaurants. We're going to hold a special meeting for the Public Health District on August 4th. And it's totally just to talk about COVID and keep COVID front of mind and that, you know, the impacts the pandemics having on our community. You know, we getting anywhere from a thousand to 2,000 people on those Zoom meetings. It's just incredible, the outreach, the reach that we get. So we felt it was important. Normally, all of the outside agencies that I sit on take the month of August off, but we felt it was important that the Public Health Board meet just to keep communicating with the, with the public. So you know, we're the, just some, some data that Dr. Turner gave me, you know, back in March, we had a high of fourteen cases, you know, and right now we're seeing as many as 40 new cases a day. It's, it's nuts. You know, there are seven long-term facility, care facilities with two or more cases. It's really bad out there and you know, the numbers shot up again today when I looked at them. The biggest numbers are in central Kitsap and in Birmingham. You know, those are the more intensely populated areas of our, of our county. And gosh, the 20 year old and the 30 year old age groups of just, they're in the 200s for a number of cases. And I saw our percentage of positives is rising dramatically too, where we were at 2%. It seemed like forever. So not a lot of good news to share on that front. On a positive, AWC reached out to me today and then I sent this out to, to all you council members. For an opportunity for the Maritime Washington National Heritage Steering Community. Something that was funded by Congress and it's to promote tourism in along the Salish Sea from Grace Harbor to Canada. And I was just wondering, does anybody have any interest in, in serving, representing our area on, on that, that committee? I would make a nomination to AWC if somebody had, had a desire or interest.
Possibly, I'll let you know.
Okay, you're, you're possibly interested. Okay. And I, there was a fact sheet that went along with it. If you want to read up about it, but be great, Cindy, if you could get back to me in a, in a, in a day or two on it.
Okay.
So that I can inform AWC.
Okay.
Wonderful. Um, let's see here. Mayor's report, I got a few things here. I'm sorry. Our August 25th, we aren't going to have that meeting. The 18th, we, I think we are going to have one action item. So we'll conduct it as a normal council meeting, but it'll be primarily discussion items. Sales tax, we got our sales tax number for May. And my goodness, when you can't spend your money on travel, you can't go out to eat. Our community is spending their money locally. That's the only thing I can attribute this to. And the fact that there's stimulus money in the economy. We were for the month of May, which is our, our July sales tax 10% over year over year and 19% over our budget. And for the year, we're 8.8% ahead of budget. I keep waiting for us to slide backwards, but people shopping local are really, really feeding our, our economy and now we, we've talked about that initiative throughout the years and I'm really seeing it. So this is a positive that's coming out of all of this. From our last city council meeting, I talked about our planning commissioner attendance and I think I got consent by you guys and smart Nick in his spare time is working on reworking our code to reduce the number of planning commissioners we have by one. And then I'll talk to the individual council members and cat planning commissioners. I think I have a couple of them that just aren't committed to it and I think I'll have it, have no problem finding somebody that wants to step aside. The Portage Cares Grants, yesterday was the training. It was actually scheduled for last Friday. Only four people were signed up for last Friday's training and three of the four were myself, John Powers and Matt Murphy, which are the two people screening applications. So we didn't think a training for one person was going to be effective. We got six people yesterday. When we conducted the training, it isn't a prerequisite. We're just trying to get information out. The county's training wasn't well attended either. It isn't a very complex application. So I'm hopeful that people are going to be able to do this without the, the training that we offered. We did have Tracy Flood from the NAACP. She is the president of the Birmingham Chapter. Reach out to us about serving on the review committee and I accepted her offer. So her and Matt Murphy and John Powers will be our review committee. And I've got kind of some, some scoring criteria that they'll use. One is being a, a public facing business. It doesn't have to be retail, but it has a lobby or has a, a public aspect to that business. At some point, they were closed during the pandemic. And compelling, so there's a measurement of their revenue and there's a body, a text, body of text to write a, a statement about your, the impacts to your revenue. And so the compelling statement about your revenue impact is, is another of the criteria that they'll look at. Um, I've outlined, you know, there was a lot of, I recognized confusion in particular for folks that aren't on the utility committee about the capital facilities charges on the sewer. So we had a staff meeting last week and outlined a plan. And so Noah, Mark and Nick are getting together on the the projects that we will, that we feel we will need to fund in the next biennial budget and possibly the, the biennial budget after that. That was part of Nick Bond and Noah Crocker's roadshow today. So to make, so allow Noah to maybe believe some of the things that Nick's talking about and see them firsthand. And so from there, Noah is going to, you know, we've got this capital facilities plan and it's similar, but different than, than the transportation element, you know, in our capital facilities charged there. So Noah is going to do true cash flow analysis for the projects that we will be funding in the next biennial budget to ensure that these charges that we're putting in place will meet our fiscal needs. And so the plan is to take that, that goes the cash, cash flow work product to the finance committee on the 11th. And then we would bring back to the discussion as a discussion item on August 18th. There's really going to be, so you'll see all the full council then would see that the cash flow alternatives that the, the finance committee saw and potentially approved. And then there's some policy decisions that you guys need to, to discuss and make. We talked about that, that interest or inflation factor at 50% and whether it need to be, need to be a higher number. The, whether or not you, we should be including a CPI automation inclusion. And then a, at a 10,000 foot level, the methodology of the, of the, of the formula. And there, there are some alternatives to that and to have a high level discussion of that so that, that those are really the three policy elements that need to be discussed. And so hopefully we can get you the information you need at the 18th. Then to potentially take action on this on September and first meeting in September. You know, this is an update. We'll be bringing this full body of work and then it would include potential impacts to rates in, in two, two and a half years when we do the full redo of the full plan. And so we need to get this done sooner versus later because we have a lot of activity. And if we're collecting those fees at the lower rate, we're, it's lost revenue to the city. But I fully understand that you guys have to understand all of the policy decisions, policy points in this. And we're going to work to do that at that August 18th meeting. So we talked about the community center tonight. I sent a video out today and Fred Chang was in that video for the Blackjack Creek Cleanup with Northwest Hospitality. Nice job, Fred. Your friend Scott Diener wants to be included next time though, so make sure you invite him. He wanted to know how to get involved with that. Let's see here, Editer Park Improvements, you know, Rotary Club, is it 10,000 or 15,000 that the Rotary Club has, Cindy? Yes, somewhere in there? Yeah.
No less than 10.
No less than 10. Okay.
And upwards of 15.
We have $90,000 in our, in our entertainment, what is it? It's a, it's a dedicated fund of parks from the admission tax. And that project was $40,000 and the Rotary Club is going to contribute at least $10,000. It's for the new streetlights and putting power out to the bridge for seasonal lighting. And I'd like to accept that donation from this, from we, when we talked about it a couple of months ago. It was the same night we were talking about furloughs and it clearly wasn't the right time to be talking about spending money, but unless there's any objections, I'd really like to get Public Works ordering that equipment, do it a budget amendment and accept that donation from, from the Rotary Club so we can get that work done maybe this fall. So everybody thumbs ups on that. Cindy?
When would you want that money?
Um, that's a Noah question.
Okay.
There's a doc, somehow we've got to document that and I'm going to, he's not on the call tonight. Could you? Reach out to Noah?
Yes.
Soon, you know, in the next month or so.
Okay. Okay.
There was the, we had a problem with the docking station. Some people come in and print and access the network. The desk that it's on, we've got an employee at it now and it got shoved aside. We've moved it temporarily until the new workstations arrive. When the new workstations, why, you guys will have a dedicated workstation that if Charlie, they'll share with Charlie if she ever comes back to City Hall. And so for right now, let's assume that you can walk in from the lobby because that's the easiest way to describe this, but you're not going to because you have to come in the other direction. So when you come in from the lobby, Janelle's desk is on the left. There's a return on the side of her desk with, and there's a, the docking station is sitting right there on the return of her desk, on the backside of her desk. So if you're, so you're going to come in from the other direction, almost head towards the hallway. It's that last desk on your right. And it should be easy to find. So, and as we get this new furniture installed, we'll make it in a dedicated space for you guys. I'm sorry, we had to move it. Any questions about that location? So is it clear as mud? Fred?
You know, I was wondering if Steve could do some magic and let us just print wirelessly. Because we can connect wirelessly and we can download when we're in the office.
None of the printers are set up for wireless. Or they're all on our, they're hardwired into our network. So not even I can't do that. So we don't have wireless technology in, on our, any of our printers. I have it at home, but I don't, I don't have it here. We don't have it here at City Hall, but good, good ask. But it, it shouldn't be a problem. You should be able to snap into it right there. I promise we won't move it. At least I won't move it. I can't guarantee somebody else won't.
Will it work with an iPad?
What's that?
Will it work with an iPad?
No, I'm sorry. Everybody, you're special, John. Uh, let's see, that's all I have. Believe it or not. Okay, department directors. Mr. Dorsey, do you want to go first?
Yeah, because I have nothing.
All right.
There's a question about something.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Dorsey? Okay, none? Chief, Chief Brown, are you in a spaceship circling?
Uh, well, all due respect, it's the Millennium Falcon. Yeah, no, we're continuing to power forward. As we discussed last time, we started our accreditation process. And we'll probably have some more significant announcements in the next couple of months, but we're still, we're still making some really, really good progress downstairs. So again, if you guys have any questions, I'm, I'm here.
Let's see here, Mr. Bond?
Nothing to report tonight.
Okay, well, you had half the agenda. Charlie, you have anything to share?
I have the other half of the agenda, so. I'm happy to stand for any questions if anyone has anything about, since the law changes every day lately.
Janine, anything to report from the clerk's office?
No report.
No, I just want to call Janine out. You know, she has done yeoman's work on our web. Our website's really looking good. She's done a lot of work and Ryan just popped on, contributed heavily to that and I continue to, to applaud the two of them and the work they're doing on our, on our press releases and our website has never looked better. So thank you to both of you. Press releases and our website has never looked better. So thank you to both of you.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see here. I haven't missed anybody, have I? We're to our second. Public comment period and I see a Matt Hayden that joined us if they're wishing to address the council. You have three minutes if you'd like. Okay, Matt doesn't appear to want to comment and that's fine. And with that, we don't have an executive session, so our meeting is adjourned.
Go to the order. Do you want to do go to the order?